Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees' meeting of the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, December 12, 2011, so if you're watching live on Monday, December 12, we encourage you to call in. If you have comments or questions, our call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch us on a live webcast at PCTV76.org, on on-demand webcasts after the meeting is over at PCTV76.org, or on Verizon, FiOS, or Cablevision, Optimum, online. Our next scheduled meeting is a regular meeting. Outside the regular schedule, it's going to be Wednesday morning, December 28, at 8:30 a.m., for the purpose of approving bills. Our meeting, our normal work session, which will be happening next week, the 19th, is instead the evening of the annual dinner to honor and thank our volunteer board and commission members. So, we need to meet on December 28 at 8:30 a.m. here at Village Hall for the purpose of approving bills, and don't anticipate, at the moment at least, any other business being transacted then. And then we have a regular meeting, again, in the New Year, January 9, 2012, at 8:00 p.m., with a work session at 7:00. So, we have a few announcements to make, but first and foremost among them is that in our work session this evening, we were visited by John Henkel, who is the U.S. CEO of the Henkel Knife Company. They are currently located on 9A in Hawthorne, near the Sawmill Multiplex Theaters. I am happy, in fact delighted, to report that the Henkel Company is in contract to buy the MLA property on Marble Avenue. This has been brewing for a good, long period of time, and we've been working with them for a while to encourage this result. And they have consummated a deal with the current owner of the property, which is the Stop &amp; Shop supermarket company. They have owned it for, I guess what must be 10 or 12 years by now. Henkel came tonight with their architect, Michael Gallin, and showed us schematic site plans to give us an idea of what they anticipate filing in early January to begin the process of site plan review. And the Planning Commission will be the lead agency going through that. You'll hear more about it as that progresses, but the short version of the story is that they anticipate the building will essentially sit on the same footprint. They're not knocking it down. They do need to raise the roof in a couple of areas and anticipate rebuilding the office area in the front, but it is a warehousing and distribution use, a rather modest impact overall with 75 or so employees and about three incoming and three outgoing trucks on the typical day. They typically operate on weekdays only with the rare occurrence when they have Saturday activity. So, I am nothing but delighted to report that it looks as though we will be going through the approvals process to welcome a new and very significant corporate tenant to the Village of Pleasantville and see that MLA property up and running and back in the productive Pleasantville economy again. Obviously, there will be decisions to be made and discussions and negotiations to be had at the Planning Commission process, but the use that Henkel proposes is an as-of-right use with offices in the front and light industrial use in the back. So, they don't at the moment anticipate any significant zoning variances. If they look for a variance of any kind, it is likely to be a modest variance on dimension. So, happy news. Did anyone else want to add anything to that?
I think it's a very sharp use of the property. I'll have to repeat that with a system that flowed to my weak brain, but found its way bubbling to the top.
Well, at any rate, I have suggested to the Henkel Company that when they are making their way through the planning process and the site plan has become clearer in work with the Planning Commission, that that would be a good occasion for them to come back to a televised session of the Village Board and then make a presentation so that those of you who watch either online or live on TV can get a sense for what's going on there. But, as reported to us tonight, they expect to file their preliminary site plan for approval in early January and start what will be clearly a process that will take a bit of time to work through the process. But, exciting news, and I'm nothing but thrilled to report that they are also interested in becoming a significant linchpin of Pleasantville and having a face and an involvement in all that goes on here. And we also are optimistic that we'll work out a happy and synergistic opportunity to use the parking lot adjacent to the Fields, which is actually owned at the moment by Stop &amp; Shop and would, in this scenario, become owned by Henkel Knife. So, very, very happy news in an economy that's a bit uncertain to see not only all the positive work that's going on at a smaller scale around the village, but to have this happen at the end of the year is a very happy holiday season gift for all of us. So, a couple of other things to report. Our DPW department has been working very, very hard. In fact, some weekend overtime shifts as well to try to catch up. We had the double whammy of the leaf pickup season and all of the storm debris that was the result of that crazy storm. So, they are still a bit behind, but catching up. So, if you in your neighborhood need attention, don't hesitate to let DPW know. Chances are, they already do know. One of the problems we've had is that we've been around to a number of streets and then, over the weekend, homeowners do more work cleaning up from storm debris, and we end up with quite a bit more work to do. That's obviously part of what we need to get done for all of you, but it's meant that we need to get back to some neighborhoods several times. So, we appreciate your patience, and I can assure you, we appreciate the work of the people on the DPW crew who have been stretched pretty thin by all of this. So, blessedly, the weather has cooperated in December, and hopefully, we can avoid any white stuff in the immediate near future. So, did anybody else have any other announcements they wanted to make? Last piece I wanted to mention about DPW is we're now a couple of months into the revised sanitation schedule. Hopefully, all of you have accustomed yourselves to the days your pickups will be happening, but I wanted to remind everybody of two things. And one is that the DPW pickup schedule is always available to you on the Village website, which is Pleasantville-NY.gov, and I encourage you to use that if that's a convenient thing for you, just to remind yourself of what the schedule is, and also to check whether there is a week that has a holiday that might be affecting the pickup schedules. Monday holidays are pretty easy to deal with, but when holidays fall on another day, it sometimes gets a little bit complicated. So, with the holiday weeks coming up the end of December, beginning of January, I encourage you to take a look at Pleasantville-NY.gov, and you can confirm for yourself what the sanitation schedules are.
You know, I have to say, I went to that. I tried to do that during the Thanksgiving week and couldn't find it.
Well, it's usually right on the front page, isn't it?
It wasn't. Not then. So, I was...
All right. Well, that's important feedback, since I just sent everyone to the site.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
We'll double-check to make sure that's happening, but...
I actually went to the calendar then to sort of figure out.
Into the DPW calendar? Yeah. I do think it's there, but maybe we can make it a little more prominent because if...
Are you saying I wasn't looking hard enough?
I don't know, but clearly...
You may not be able to see it on a DOS computer system.
Clearly, it's an issue.
I will say that for anybody out there that felt some... Been out there the wrong time, done the wrong thing with the schedule, that I came down just a couple weeks ago on my way to work, my wife came back, was coming back in with recyclables or something. It was raining like crazy out. She goes, "Ah, the schedule changed. Who are the idiots that changed the schedule?" And then she looked at me, she goes, "I take it back."
At least she took it back.
Well...
She doesn't take much back, but she'll take that back, mainly because of the four of you who are involved. It would have just been me.
Just to remind all of you that we changed the schedule not just to be contrary, but because we are now running the sanitation department with four full-time employees instead of six, and that required rearranging the work schedules so that we could make that happen. So, it's a good cause and a good result. We appreciate your patience, and hopefully, within a couple of months, it will become second nature, and we'll all be back where we were with it happening on autopilot. So, then the last thing I want to remind you is, it's also very useful to sign up if you're interested for email blasts from the Village. If you go to the Village website, again Pleasantville-NY.gov, you can sign up right on the front page, subscribe to news, and you'll be confronted with a list of things to choose. You can get agendas for board meetings, agendas for zoning and planning, et cetera, or simply Village general messages. We frequently send out messages when there's been a change in a schedule. We send out messages to remind people when tax payments or water bills are due, and it's a great way for us to communicate with you. You can get an email right into your mailbox. So, Pleasantville-NY.gov, sign up for whatever news feeds you're interested in getting. So, we have three public hearings tonight, each on modest changes. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing on the local law amending Local Law 10 of 2011 entitled "Part-Time Constable as requested by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services"?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've been back and forth on this. Those of you who watch the meetings on a regular basis may have seen this. We are using part-time constables as our court officers, and that has turned out to be a successful thing for us. It's a cost-effective solution where we pay these constables only for the time the court is available, but it required us to create this new category of part-time constable in our local law. The proposed change we make here removes a segment of the description that says, "The failure to enroll in and successfully complete any required training program shall result in the disqualification of such person from acting as a part-time constable until such required training program is successfully completed." And having removed that, we would add the sentence, "No person appointed as a peace officer shall exercise the powers of a peace officer unless he or she has received such certification within 12 months of appointment." So, that's the switch that is under discussion tonight. And again, it is a request from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services. So, anybody have any comment on that?
No.
Any member of the public have any comment on that? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing on that matter is closed. Now, do I have a motion to open a public hearing on a local law amending Chapter 173 of Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-60, Parking Prohibited at All Times?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a resolution that would amend our parking prohibitions, and we would be, in essence, revising the guidelines for parking, not just guidelines, the prohibitions, on Ashland Avenue near the middle school driveway. The current arrangement is that there is no parking on the west side of Ashland Avenue from the middle school driveway north 20 feet, the west side being the same side that the school is on. Instead, it would extend that to a distance of 120 feet north of the middle school driveway. That is, 100 feet more would be marked as no parking. And in addition, we would establish a no parking zone south of the middle school driveway for a distance of 35 feet. This has been reviewed by this Public Safety Committee, and it is their recommendation that we take these steps.
And do the residents affected right around in there, are they aware of what's going on?
Well, they would be aware in the form of the posting of this public hearing. I doubt that we've sent a specific letter to them. But again, the issue here is to maintain clear sightlines and to avoid a lot of jockeying of cars in and out right in the area of the middle school park driveway on Ashland. It's been a problem that a number of people have brought to our attention, and certainly, from my standpoint, I would defer to the Public Safety Committee.
And that's fine. You know, I live on Romer, and we had that problem at the middle school driveway coming out. And so, there's parking prohibited there to allow for school buses to make a turn, inadequate sightlines for people to go in and out of the middle school driveway, but it's only during school hours, not school days. So, to the extent that this is a sort of a school problem, one wonders if you're, if the people who live on Ashland right there, you know, they can't park there for birthday parties now on Saturday afternoons. So, just saying that this affects their permanent parking. And they might be surprised about that.
Is Romer, is Romer just during school hours?
Just during school hours, just across from the library down to the middle school driveway. Well, you, well, actually, it's only, it's only a couple of hours during pickup and a couple of hours during drop-off. In the middle, you can park there during the middle of the day. It's just during the times of pickup and drop-off.
Well, so that might be a reasonable... Judy, am I correct? We could actually relax this guideline in the context of the public hearing. We just can't tighten it without renotising. I don't know what the chief would say about the enforcement issues attached to, sometimes it's okay, sometimes it isn't.
Well, it works in other parts of the village.
We just, we just did this in the...
Old village, I mean, in the...
Yeah, the southeast portion of Pleasantville, and did it only during school hours. I think maybe we should do the same here.
So, school hours, I mean, you clearly wanted to extend.
School days or...
School days.
What did we write on that?
Well, they use the Fields for Games on...
Yeah, I was going to say, there is, there are issues, although nobody parks up there.
They're not really parking on Ashland for the games.
Yeah, during, during, on the weekends, there's plenty of parking down at the Fields. So, there's, they're not really up there.
Well, somebody, as Brian said, was having a birthday party or some other family event, and flooded the street with cars, then you'd have the same situation you have potentially during school hours, the buses coming and going and not being able to see around the mouth of the driveway.
I mean, this would mean that the first homeowner north of the driveway could not park in front of their house ever.
Ever.
Right. And that's not, that's, that's a problem.
Well, it may not be a problem, but it's going to be a significant change.
No, I think it will be a problem, because you want to be able to park in front of your house, but I don't understand why we just can't make it during school hours or school days. Whatever we had put for the same ordinance in the southeast regarding parking on, is it Saratoga?
Right.
And Garrigan.
And Garrigan. We said only during, because we had the same conversation.
Right. Well, I do believe that the, that the sole point of it was to address the school drop-off and pickup.
That you can't see when you're coming out of that driveway. Yes.
It is. It's a big problem down there right now.
It is. It's a hazard. It definitely...
And people are parked everywhere. They're stacked up. You can't get, and you can only get one car through at a time.
Yep.
So, making the turn, and people are impatient.
They are, and they don't even obey that it's a school zone. It's 20 mile an hour parking.
15.
It's 15 mile an hour speed limit.
Right.
And they're still flying down there with, when there's cars parked and there's only one, you know, only really one could fit through, and then they're trying to get out the exit. And it's, it is a problem. But, but when it's not in, school is not in session, it's not a problem.
When, in, when I, back, this happened in the mid-'90s when the school requested that, that the side of the street from the, from the library essentially all the way to the middle school driveway would be, would be a no parking zone just in the morning hours and then the afternoon, afternoon hours. I predicted it would not work, that I was absolutely convinced that this was going to be a disaster and, and it would fail. And it hasn't, and people don't park there. And it really is, it's useful for the buses and for sort of the general...
What does the sign say, Jonathan?
You know, I have to, you know, we could call my wife and ask her.
God's love.
But it's something like 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning until, or 7 till 9.
Monday through Friday.
7 till 9, or something like...
4:06.
2 till 4, something, just in the afternoons. So, it's a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours in the afternoon, and then the rest of the time. Because, you know, there is a, people do like to park in front of their houses on the...
Does it require two signs to say all that?
No, no. It's just one sign that people respect.
What, are you afraid of sign pollution, Jonathan?
There's just enough signs down there.
I know.
The one thing I'm concerned about is that we, we sectioned everything, everything changes on this local law. And I'm just wondering, it doesn't state anything in the letter if it was instituted by any residents having a problem getting in. I know that Mary Fox Holter was called the other day once to know this was going to be happening.
Right.
And I had told it was on the agenda, so I think she's very anxious about it. I think because it just changes the section, the whole, you know, the whole section of the, that we might really have to renotise it and check with, and just to check with Richie, just to make sure that this wasn't, you know, we didn't have residents requesting this and then to change it. You know, those people, the Public Safety Committee is believing that we're going to do it, and they may be...
Understood. So...
I would rather have it done right.
So, Judy, if we, if we were to...
We could, we could, you know, you could talk with Richie and the Public Safety Committee and...
So hypothetically, if we...
And we notice it on the 28th.
If we didn't act on this tonight, noticed it for that morning meeting on the 28th, we could then pass it that...
Or we could just keep the public hearing open till the 28th. Tonight, you don't have to renotice.
Well...
I mean, if we change it to, say, school days only, for example, maybe no time, or until 5:00 p.m. school days, or something like that.
Let's just authorize me to notice a public hearing for the 28th, and then we could, we could adopt...
Oh, then you have to file another...
Let's just file another...
Notice to the newspaper.
...illegal.
Okay. That makes sense.
But I would be more comfortable with that. I'll talk to Richie tomorrow.
Okay. So then, because I do think we should understand the lay of the land and understand what his, his take would be on. So, the suggestion there then would be to close this public hearing and to have a motion to open a new public hearing on the same subject.
Right. It would be, right, just, it wouldn't be parking prohibited at all times. It wouldn't be parking prohibited at certain, certain hours or days, and then the same thing, but it would be school day only.
Right. Because it does seem reasonable, as Brian points out, not to, not to create a problem for homeowners in the summer when, you know, the rules are really solving a problem that doesn't exist at that point. So...
We could, we could just look at the signs that are on Romer and just do the same sign.
Okay. So, can we...
So, why don't we just close it?
Can we incorporate into the same resolution, closing and noticing a new one? So, do I have a motion to close the public hearing and to renotice a public hearing for Wednesday, December 28 at 8:30 a.m.?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. That public hearing is closed. We'll circle back to Public Safety and Police Chief, find out what the story is, and be in a position to take action. So, what I said a short while ago about the meeting on Wednesday, December 28, being solely for the purpose of approving bills, the agenda has now doubled to include this public hearing and possible action.
So, bring coffee.
The one thing I will like to remind people of is that at the, I believe it's the north end of Ashland Avenue, at Bedford Road...
Right.
There is a section of, of no parking there on both sides of the street for very good reason.
Yes.
And I will say that every school day at 2:30 or thereabouts, the, there are cars parked right to the corner of Bedford Road, and parking enforcement is being notified. We're not, we're not trying to be punitive here, but it is really dangerous to try to make that turn onto Ashland Avenue with kids crossing without a crossing guard. And I implore you to find, put another place to park other than there. Failure to do so, I will let you know that parking enforcement is going to be notified to be up there. So, I'm not trying to spoil, we're not trying to spoil holiday plans or anything else or be the Grinch's, but it's just really dangerous. And you need to find another place to park.
Thank you for that. Okay. Is there a motion to open our third public hearing on a local law amending Chapter 185, Zoning, Section 185-23, Revision to the Code Regarding Planlight Manufacturing?
Um...
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is open on the third public hearing of the evening, and this is a local law that simply adds the, as a permitted use in our M1 planned light manufacturing district, indoor theaters. This was generated by the fact that Arc Stages, which is an amalgam of the Little Village Playhouse and the former Chappaqua Drama Group, are proposing to lease the metal warehouse that is at, at the end of Wheeler Avenue. If you drive down Wheeler and cross Bedford Road, past, between Lucy's and the Chase Manhattan Bank, right to the end there, the building you face is a big warehouse building that Arc Stages would like to turn into both their offices and shops as well as a theater. Their interim plan, I think, is to do a renovation that would allow them to operate out of there for their, their classes and activities while they do some fundraising for the purpose of building the theater that they envisioned. But, in order to make that a legal use, we need to revise the zoning code to permit indoor theaters in the M1 district, which is currently not included. That question was circulated to the Planning Commission, and they were in favor of this change. Anybody else want to weigh in on this subject?
I think it's a great opportunity to expand the use in that district to allow more, a greater variety of uses in the manufacturing zone that don't conflict with one another, but rather allow some uses, particularly in the evening, in a zone which is otherwise pretty dead.
I would agree. We have a rather limited area that is zoned for planlight manufacturing. Both sides of Tompkins Avenue, adjacent to the railroad tracks from, from Clinton Street on down towards Martling and Sunnyside, and then on the far side of Marble Avenue, between Marble Avenue and the Sawmill Parkway, for example, the MLA site, the site of the Henkel's proposal that we just talked about, is also light manufacturing. So, seems like a great use, and certainly are optimistic that the folks at Arc Stages, again, combined efforts of Little Village Playhouse and Chappaqua Drama Group would be a great fit there and a great new piece of the Pleasantville performing arts world. So, no further comment. Any comment from the public? Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the local law amending Chapter 175 zoning?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing closed. So, we can now go on to the resolutions. Steve, the first one is number 240.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the local law amending Law Number 10 of 2011 entitled "Part-Time Constable as requested by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services." This was discussed a little earlier in the public hearing. Essentially, the language changes that the mayor read into the record would allow the establishment of the part-time constable position to occur in a fashion that would be in accordance with state regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 241, I'll take, that was the local law amending the parking on Ashland, and instead, we will make that a resolution to notice a public hearing on Wednesday, December 28 at 8:30 a.m. to continue this discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mindy, number 242.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the local amending, local law amending Chapter 185 of the zoning, of zoning, Section 185-23, Planlight Manufacturing, to add indoor theaters as listed below.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 243.
Resolve that the pre-check register date, December 12, 2011, covering check numbers... Is there, is there something?
Something is missing. Those checks numbers, it's...
71033.
71152.
Right.
Okay. Have been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as set forth in the record below, totaling $400,515.30.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 244.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, November 28, 2011, and they're hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections? The, just, just to make a note, and that is that these minutes include our annual youth recognition night, which is a great night every year, and was particularly so this year with the standing-room-only crowd of young people from Pleasantville who were recommended by their various sponsoring organizations for their service during the year. But it was also an occasion when we mentioned that an affordable condominium in the Pleasantville Gardens complex, which is managed by the Pleasantville Housing Development Fund Corporation, had become available. There were three apartments in that complex that came into Village hands during the collapse of the savings and loans in the '90s, and they are all three affordable. of the savings and loans in the '90s, and they are all three affordable apartments with some legal stipulations that are attached to them. And we encouraged anybody who was interested to apply and there would be a lottery to pull everybody's name from the applicants and then qualify them potentially by the apartment. That drawing was held last week. There were a total of 19 applicants, am I right, Brian?
Yes.
Brian and I were there. There were a total of 19 applicants for this two-bedroom apartment and the person whose number was drawn first and therefore is first in line, assuming that she qualifies in the review process, turns out to be a Pleasantville resident. So, it was a happy experience where a Pleasantville resident who is a parent with a couple of kids may have an opportunity to find a permanent ownership housing at an affordable price right here in Pleasantville, New York. So, it was a rather happy event.
Mr. Rich.
All in favor of number 244, the minutes?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
And I, and I would say that, that the comment, that at least the feeling that a lot of us had that night when we were drawing, and there were a number of people in the audience who needed help with, with housing, we just felt like, it's too bad we didn't have 19 units that day. I mean, there were a number of people who went away who were from Pleasantville and, you know, just didn't get, didn't get their number picked. So, you know, those of us who are working on affordable housing here in the Village, you know, the, these are, and those of us who support that, these are good things to do and these are, you know, the Village, there's definitely in this economy a need for something like this.
Okay, number 245.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the quick claim deed with the Pleasantville Union Free School District.
Is there a second?
Second.
This, this proposed quick claim deed is a transfer of property that is currently in Village ownership to the Pleasantville Union Free School District. The piece of property in question is actually most of the driveway that enters the middle school parking lot and a piece of the adjacent grassy area alongside that driveway that goes from Romer Avenue down the hill towards the middle school driveway. That piece of property was the subject of contested ownership claims several years ago and the Village pursued legal action and was successful in achieving clear title to that piece of property. It's a piece of property that we have no particular use for, although clearly, we need to have the access to the school campus in public hands. And so, we have proposed and are to vote tonight on a deed that would transfer that property to the Pleasantville Union Free School District, which is the primary beneficiary of it. We've included in that deed a restriction that says, should the school district ever cease to need it, it would be returned to the Village and that the school district would not be in a position to bill on it or sell it to somebody else. So, it's a discussion we found of the school district and I think a happy resolution of a bit of a long story. One question, Judy, and that is that the resolution authorizes me to sign the quick claim deed. The quick claim draft provided by the attorney has Patty signing it?
No, no, I'll have him change it so you can sign it.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Any further comments, announcements, whatever? Nope. All right, we appreciate your attention. Again, are happy to have this second to last meeting of 2011 be the one where we are able to report the very happy news that the MLA site is in contract to be purchased by the Henkel Knife Company and that we can look forward to their filing with the Planning Commission in January and, and ultimately establishing a great new economic commercial piece for the Pleasantville economy. So, very, very happy news. We wish everybody an extremely happy holiday season and we will be back on December 28 at 8:30 for a special meeting the week right, right before New Year's to address a couple of modest issues. And after that, we'll wish you a happy New Year. So, thank you for your attention. Good night.
All right.